Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Committee of a Whole for April 24th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmembers Pitsley? Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Six members present. You have a quorum of the committee.
Thank you. And I would turn to Councilmember Hussein on the minutes for April 10th.
Sure, thank you. I would move the April 10th, 2023 minutes as presented.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Before we take public comment, we have a couple of housekeeping issues. Want to remind councilmembers that your eligibility affidavit and your financial interest statement are both due May 1st with the clerk, so please make sure that those are taken care of. Also, in ways and means today, the Finance Director gave us some amended projections on our budget, and those pages have been passed out to you for you to put in your budget book. Also, if our clerk will make sure that those are up on our website, as new pages, we'll have those available for the public as well. This has to do with the projections of the budget for 2023. It does not change any of the numbers that they have proposed for 2024. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to make public comment? If you please come up to the dais, to the podium, and please give us your name for the record.
Hi, Loretta Stanaway, and tonight I want to touch on a few things to do with these Parks and Recreation budget proposals, especially relating to the cemeteries. And, excuse me, I see better close up without the glasses. The department summary from 2022 showed $1,200, 126,395 as their proposed budget versus this year, $991,827, which is a seven and a half percent increase. I'm not quite sure where those numbers came from, but they don't seem to make sense to me. The Parks Village is money that comes into the cemeteries as a subsidy. It's projected for the coming year to be $527,827, an increase of 17.3%. But I noticed that there's no projection for income from opening of closings of graves in Mount Hope at all. And even if you only count the Fratton Memorial Garden, there's definitely opens and closes in that cemetery. There is no transfer in projected this year from the Perpetual Care Fund to the cemetery budget, which then falsely inflates the subsidy by a minimum of the $28,000 that was brought in the prior years for three years running. Also, on a separate topic, the emergency shelter funding of $180,865.51 does not show up at all in this projected budget. So while we're hearing relentlessly about housing issues, homeless issues, shelter issues, $180,000 has been deleted from the budget for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone else? Seeing no one else, then we'll move on with our departmental budget presentations. And next up, we have District Court. And how we're going to run this is how we've done this. At our last budget meeting, you have the seven questions that you were given, and we asked you to go over those. And then at the end of that, we'll see if our internal auditor has any questions, and then we'll open it up to councilmembers. So welcome, and if you'd make sure that you introduce everyone that's with you this evening, and you may start.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, counsel. Anethia Brewer, Court Administrator, 54A District Court. Pleased to be here to share answers to the questions you've posed, but I'm even more pleased to have my support team here with me. Chief Judge Protem Cynthia Ward is here. Our deputy administrator, Susan Neeling. And then I'm going to be introducing you to Ulysses Rosa, our new eviction diversion coordinator. And so I'll get started, because you'll probably have questions once we finish. Can you not hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, the one TV there. I just saw that one TV. Can you see it on that TV?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So what is the difference between our budget from this current fiscal year is proposed? Very, very little. There is a slight increase in our contractual services line to support the partnership with South Central Mediation Services, and also the city's yearly local share for the Public Defender's Office. So that's the increase for that particular line. While there were no major changes in mandated services for the District Court, we continue to have major successes with our specialty court efforts. More specifically, our Felony Sobriety Court led by Judge Stacia Buchanan, our Domestic Finance Court led by Judge Cynthia Ward, and most recently, our new eviction diversion program. As most of you may be aware, we were selected out of, one of 12 cities selected across the country by the National Center of State Courts to develop, to help develop, a program that courts can use across the nation. And we have been so successful in the little time that we've been engaged with this. Ulysses Rosa here. I had him come because I wanted his face to be familiar, is our new eviction diversion coordinator. He will be representing our city this coming July in Tampa at the National Center to talk about our planning efforts and our successes thus far. And I wanted to share that, because that's been a huge, huge change for the District Finally, I wanted to share that our services have extended through community outreach. The court has participated in a number of local expungement clinics as well as licensed restoration clinics, so, in the community. So we wanted to share that. Are there any fee increases, District Court, this year? We presented one fee increase. Currently, we conduct alcohol and drug assessments in-house to assist clients with the costs associated with said assessment. Now, for many years, the court, and I mean many, the court has charged only $90 per assessment. We've increased that to $100, so that is the only fee increase that we've proposed. This is still a major savings for our clients, because most of our independent contractors and agencies that conducted assessments outside charge between $200 and $250 per assessment. So we are hoping that we're doing justice for our clients by doing this in-house. We do not have any major equipment purchases planned for our upcoming budget. However, we do have a small equipment line for incidentals because of the number of things that we come across during the course of a year related to the Supreme Court and the State Court Administrator's office. One thing that we're looking forward to toward the end of the year is the e-filing project. Our court has been selected in the second wave of courts to implement, to go live, and we do know that that's going to require some scanners for our Civil Department in order for our staff to complete that work. And that'll probably be done at the end of the year, so that we have a go-live date sometime after the first of the year with the public. So that's it for us as far as equipment purchases. So are there any eliminating, combining, and contracting positions in our budget? The court has not combined or eliminated any contractual positions of the three that we have to our grant funded. So we really only have one that's attributed to our budget. We have also, and this is what I want to share, because this may come up from the auditor, eliminated two clerk, deputy clerk positions in the court. And we did that to boost our salary schedule. Of course, like other departments, we found ourselves in quite a bind during, or after COVID of attracting and retaining employees. As a matter of fact, we lost a number of employees to other courts in our jurisdiction, as well as to other courts in the state. So we did that with the approval of the Chief Judge. We used those funds to enhance our current salary schedule. District Court did not receive any ARPA funds directly. However, funding through the Financial Empowerment Office has assisted many Lansing residents with acquiring their licenses. So we've spent some of the ARPA funds with the help of Financial Empowerment to restore licenses. And I know that Amber Paxton is going to talk a little bit more about that in our efforts, but we have been working with that office on those funds that are being used. And do we have any proposed budget carryforwards? The answer to that is no. We do not. Really, a standard budget, standard quo for District Court this time, as you all know, 80 to 85% of our budget is personnel-related. We have not asked for any additional capital items during the upcoming budget year. But before we move on to questions from council, I did want to publicly thank our Information Technology Department, as well as facilities, who we just would not make it without their existence and the help that they give us on a daily basis. But something that's pretty new for me, I'd also like to commend our Treasury and our Budget Department. We went through the first Supreme Court financial audit this District Court has had in over 30 years. And frankly, as a court administrator, I've never been through one. And the one thing I can let you know is that the auditors were very, very impressed with our handle, cash handling procedures, how we are docketing our cases, what we're doing with our files. And I just want to say that our Treasury and Budget Office has always included us in the internal audits that we have here with the city, and I think that's been a huge help for us. So we came out very well in that audit, and just thought that was something that council should know. So with all of that said, I think we are ready for questions.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over first to our internal auditor.
Hi, Anethia. Hi, everyone. I have a, oh, I have a new mic. It works. This is very exciting. You already answered some of my questions upfront, which I appreciate, but just one question. Were you asked in this budget cycle for FY '24 to cut expenses at all in your budget?
No.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Are there other council questions at this time? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. A question about your Zoom ability.
Yes.
I know during the pandemic, remote access to the courts, especially by Zoom, has kind of grown and developed, and is still around, is my understanding, even though the pandemic is declared over. Can you speak a little bit to how you're able to have people appear by Zoom and participate, and have a courtroom in person, whether it's a judge or attorneys working from a different place? And are there any costs associated with running Zoom and having the hybrid court sessions?
Okay. Right now, I can definitely tell you there are no costs associated with it. I think our judges have done a phenomenal job of managing their dockets and deciding what types of items can come in virtually, and then the types of items that cannot come in. And I think that I'll let Judge Ward, if she wants to add anything about that, because she does that work daily. But we do not have any costs associated with that.
Yes, each, every, good afternoon, or good evening, council. Each of the judges of the District Court, we proceed every day with our docket, assuming it's going to be a hybrid docket. Some people will show up by Zoom, some people will show up in person. So we're prepared. Every day, we log onto Zoom. Every day, we're in the courtroom expecting to receive people who will show in person, and we're just prepared to go with the flow. Sometimes we'll have one party appear in Zoom and the other person appear in person. Thankfully, the District Court has provided all the judges with an iPad, so that people who appear in person, if they need to speak to someone who's on Zoom, we can connect them into a breakout room with the iPad connected through Zoom.
Are there, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here today. You spoke a little bit about your eviction diversion program. Could you speak about, I guess, kind of what that looks like? And is it also drawing any more of your resources within the system? Or is it just, you know, if you could explain that a little bit more?
I want to share, especially last week.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Yes, the program has basically created a holistic approach for the courts to bridge resources for those being evicted. What I found on the early goings was that I'm not just facing folks that are evicted, but there's also people that are homeless, people that are in shelters, people that are in hospitals, that are reaching out to me to find those resources for whatever their next stage is in housing. And to meet those needs, it did cause for me to have to expand that connection to the resources that are out there. And we've had great success in doing that for people.
Go ahead.
About how many people have you served since the program has been in existence?
This past week, it's been nine months, and I have documented over 500 families, again, all in different places. We are aware without CERA that we're not going to divert every eviction, but we can meet the family where they're at. So if they are evicted, what their next stage is, are they going to go to a shelter? Are they going to go to a new place and need help with first month rent or security deposit? So we're ready, available to connect them to those resources.
Are you working with the other city departments to connect that service and care?
Yeah, the Office of Financial Empowerment is one of my main partnerships right now. And so I have referred over 200 families to meet with them. There's been challenges in those meetings actually occurring, but I continually follow up with those families to make sure that they understand if they miss an appointment, they could always reschedule. And Financial Empowerment has helped with budgeting, with helping them repair their credit, and also connecting them to other resources. So it's been a very successful partnership.
Thank you.
I have Councilmember Cross.
Thank you, President Wood. In your program, your eviction diversion program, have you worked with our housing ombudsman, Joe McDonald, at all?
Yes, specifically with those being evicted that are in the Section 8 program. The HRCS program does get involved. Me and Joe sometimes email. When he needs me, he'll call. So that resource is being used, and again, strictly for those on Section 8.
And then the other question I had is, maybe you could elaborate a little more with, you know, I guess, what does the process look like? So I see the evictions on YouTube live during the day with Judge Simmons' courtroom, and I usually see, you know, eviction, 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 eviction. So I guess I haven't actually seen what you do in play. So if you could just kind of elaborate a little, just a little more, what groups you work with?
Oh, sure, sure. In 2022, Advent House and Capital Area Housing Partnership were, of course, central pieces to what I was doing, because they had the CERA funding. And so when we meet in the courtroom on Wednesdays, either of the judges puts me in a breakout room, and that's where I do a quick intake, phone number, email, and so forth. And then, depending on their situation, I could get a gauge of who they should apply with. Again, without the CERA funding, I know that the guys that are behind $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 in rent, that type of funding is not available. But if they have savings coupled with DHHS and some of the other resources like St. Vincent, Tri-County Office on Aging, just to name a couple, maybe together with that family, they can pull the money together.
And then just one last question.
Of course.
When you're looking at these renters, the place that they're living, the money that you're giving to them to avoid the eviction, I know, so I sit on Tri-County, and we noticed that one of our landlords that has red tags was on that list of getting money from Tri-County. So are you checking the properties to make sure that we're actually putting, you know, whatever resources being used or that person, that they're actually going back to a safe place?
Unfortunately, I have access to none of the funding that goes on, so I don't know who is receiving what. My, you know, my job is to simply bridge them to the money that's there. Or if it has nothing to do with money, with whether it's counseling, to get them to that, to that resource. But as far as the dollars, that is not being tracked by us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there other questions? I do have one. Anethia, you had said that you didn't receive any ARPA dollars, but didn't we give you $50,000 for dispute resolution as part of the ARPA funds?
I do know that dispute resolution was receiving it, but I don't think it was funneled through the District Court budget.
I thought we put it through District Court, because we didn't want to have council be the one. Can you double check?
I will double check.
And then if, can you also, if that's working, because we had received positive input from you that they, that this was a good program, is that not in your budget this time?
Okay.
If you could follow up on those, I'd appreciate it.
I will get that for you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, and we'll move on to neighborhoods and citizen engagement. Let me remind councilmembers, if you have a department that you're going to have to recuse yourself from for any means, you cannot ask questions of that department when they're before us. Yes?
My record shows it was 54A District Court.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And as you saw us go through, you have the questions that we asked, and if you could address those, then we'll open it up for the internal auditor and councilmembers.
There we go. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me. So I'll just jump right on in. Every question that I'm answering, I'm just answering department-wide until I get down to the ARPA funding. Then I'll break it up into OFE and DNC. So number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Well, department-wide, we have aimed to keep our costs steady, so the difference across the board is primarily personnel costs, and those align with our current employee contracts. Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? And department-wide, there are no changes in services. Number three, are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? That is not applicable to our department. We have no rates or fees. Number four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? Department-wide, the answer is no. Number five, are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics? Department-wide, we are not eliminating, combining, or contracting any of our permanent positions. Number six, did your department receive any ARPA funding in the current fiscal year? And if so, how was it spent? I will start with our Office of Financial Empowerment. We received three buckets of money for ARPA. One was the Vitabus, that team met on 4/20 to finalize the plans for the bus. We expect the purchase will be before the next tax season begins in January 24. The holdup for that purchase has been a parts shortage. The driving while licenses suspended spending began on 4/12 at the Road to Restoration Event. At the event, close to $10,000 of fines, fees, and costs were paid on the spot. 28 Lansing residents were served. Next up is a letter campaign, and we are currently cleaning the data for this mailing now, and we are currently meeting with 54A staff weekly. And for marketing dollars for the Financial Empowerment Center, we are on schedule to utilize the $100,000 for marketing. For neighborhoods, the Gun Violence Task Force is finalizing what will be an RFP that will post publicly, along with the scoring criteria, to select an organization or nonprofit to receive a two-year funding. And the Neighborhood Advisory Board grants, the Neighborhood Advisory Board Grant Program anticipates $200,000 funded for 2023 and 2024, utilizing the allocated ARPA funding, and we are on schedule to utilize that. Number seven, does your proposed budget include a carryforward of ARPA funds? And if not, how will your department programs change because of not having those ARPA funds? We have utilized ARPA funds for expenses that will not be ongoing. The Vitabus is a one-time expense. The Driving While License Suspended Campaign is a one-time expense, and FEC marketing is a shot in the arm to boost that program. Once the ARPA funds are depleted for the neighborhood grants, we will return to our status quo line item, but internally, we plan to work to identify possible state or federal grants that can bring in additional dollars for that program.
Okay. And our internal auditor.
Hi, Delisa. Thanks for being here. So the 28.9% increase in personnel budget with no changes in staff, is that just raises and things of that sort?
That is, that is all salary and raises and fringes according to contracts.
Okay. But no new people were added?
No, no new people.
And then, were you asked at all in this budget to make any cuts?
We were not asked to make specific budget cuts, but we have been told in various meetings to be mindful of our, of our spending.
Okay. And I think you answered all my other questions, so thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? Yes, Councilmember?
So, yeah, my question's dealt with personnel as well, because I noticed that there was almost a, you know, almost a $100,000 increase in terms of salaries from the adopted and projected budget from last year. But I better understand now, can you tell me really quickly, I know we have the two kinds of shops under the one umbrella, in terms of neighborhoods, staff, how many staff members do we have?
For, right now, for neighborhoods, I have two permanent positions under mine. I have an administrative assistant, as well as a neighborhood resource coordinator. And for the, oh, sorry.
Nope. Yeah, I was going to ask about OFE.
For OFE, we have the Office of Financial Empowerment Director, Amber Paxton, as well as the Deputy Director, Zach Edson. Under them, we do have a contract employee, which is Charles Rolch, but his, his role is reimbursed by the State of Michigan funding.
Okay. And then the only other question I had, dealt with the Gun Violence Task Force money, is that that, the $55,000?
That is the, it is $300,000 that we were allocated. We are looking to push out an RFP that will fund an organization for two years at $150,000 each.
And so that's the goal, is to fund one organization for two years?
We weigh the pros and cons of funding a lot of mini-grant, or mini-funding opportunities, or make a large impact with one organization, and to, the Gun Violence Task Force chose one organization.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? Councilmember Cross.
Thank you, President Wood. Real quickly, do you, could you tell me, 311, do you know how many calls that have resulted in resolution they've taken in the past year?
And so in the past year, we've had 30,753 calls as of last Friday. When we speak about resolution, it gets kind of tricky, just because we have to When we speak about resolution, it gets kind of tricky just because we have to, some, we have to escalate, and we call them child cases. But what I can do is pull a breakdown of those calls, and I can get you that information by the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Then the other question I had, under the neighborhood section of the budget, there was a miscellaneous costs for $50,000. Could you just shed some light on maybe some of what that miscellaneous costs are?
So our miscellaneous operating expenses, that is our everyday supplies. We also fund our Citizens Academy program through there. We fund like trash cleanup supplies for our residents. We, we, we fund various activities through that, but that is, that is our spending pot that we use throughout the entire year.
Perfect. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. Thanks for being here. Relating to the 3-1-1 with the 30,000 call volume, are you showing how many calls were decreased to departments, or is that something that can be tracked? So we can, we know the difference, like if there's 30,000 calls coming in, are they, you know, still receiving 30,000 in the departments? Or if the departments usually get 30,000, because you're taking 30,000, they're down to 100 calls?
So what we, what we do, the, the system is, we've taken their main lines for the departments we have, we have adopted so far. So a resident may not be calling 3-1-1 directly. They may not dial the numbers 3-1-1, but they may dial the direct main line for public service, but they're reaching one of our 3-1-1 call center agents. So that allows them to decrease their numbers specifically for their main lines. Now, people can still reach each department by dialing a specific, a specific desk phone if, if necessary. But I don't have those specific numbers, but I can check to see if that's something in our report breakdown. But those 30,000 calls, those are the ones that are either from the, the people who are dialing the numbers 3-1-1, or they're calling the main lines and being redirected.
Okay, thank you for that. And then 100,000 for marketing. What exactly is being marketed? I know that your team, as well as yourself, are very invested in the community, and so I know that everybody is aware of the department.
Could you speak up a little bit, sir?
Hello? Sorry, sorry about that. The reference to the $100,000 in marketing, I know it's one time, but I was just interested, what are you marketing? I know your team is very involved in the community, so people are aware of the department. And then if you're marketing something specific, how are you, how is it going to organically go in, in the next budget when you don't have that 100,000?
So the, the $100,000 is specifically to market our Financial Empowerment Center, to push out our reach. We want to increase the flow of people who are coming for the free financial counseling services that are offered at Crystal Ray Community Center Monday through Friday. But as far as specifics, I can get that information to you and, and answer in the, in the future. I don't have specifics as to what exactly they're gonna say on their marketing, but they're pushing the Financial Empowerment Center.
Okay, and currently, are, I know in the past, like HRCS would refer people daily and those type of things. What are the internal, I guess, marketing referrals coming from majority with the Financial Empowerment?
Could you please clarify? When, when you say internal, I, I don't want to make any assumptions, so if you could, could clarify for me.
Are, for example, if people come needing help for basic needs in the Department of Human Relations Community Services, are they referring individuals to the Financial Empowerment? And let's say, you know, 100 people. And then I know that we just heard from the 54th District Court that he said he made over 200 referrals from the Eviction Diversion Program to the Financial Empowerment. So if you're currently serving 400 people, it would say half came from the 54th District Court, and 25% potentially came from HRCS. So currently, are other departments who are serving our constituents, people in the community, referring people to the Office of Financial Empowerment? And if so, what is, you know, how does that look with the overall amount of people that we're serving?
So I don't have the specific referral numbers, but I can work on getting that for you. But all of our departments who are forward-facing and touch bases with our constituents and residents know of the services that they offer, and I think that as soon as like budgeting pops up, they, they push people to our Financial Empowerment Center. But I can, I can look into that a little bit more for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
He actually asked my follow-up question, but let me ask you real quick, because I did have something. Are you able to distinguish between calls directly to 3-1-1? And so when you look at your workflow and your reporting, calls that come directly in to 3-1-1 as opposed to those that are rerouted to 3-1-1?
I could check into that and let you know.
I'd just love to see those numbers. We're, you know, we're constantly out in neighborhoods and things like that, pushing the 3-1-1 system, and I certainly think it has value. I'm just, I'm just curious if folks are actually calling 3-1-1. And, but the other piece is I want to thank publicly Augie Martinez, who, I mean, he is guys everywhere. I'm bumping into him at neighborhood meetings, 6:30 at night, 7:30 at night, 8 o'clock at night. So he's out there pushing the information, and I know your agents are doing a great job, too.
Thank you.
So tell them thank you. And then for you all, as a matter of fact, I was just with Robin Anderson King out at Rizdale Park about a week ago. So you guys do a fantastic job getting on the community. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
And that takes us on to our HR. Elizabeth. Good evening. And as you saw, if you could go through the seven questions, and then we'll have the internal auditor, if they have any questions for you, and then council members will follow up. Can you make sure the green light is on?
Okay, I think I'm all set.
Okay.
Question one, what is the difference between your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? We are adding one FTE for succession planning as a retirement tech. As you all may be aware, we have one person that does retirement, and so one of the things that I've noted in my short tenure as HR Director is that we need to have some succession planning with respect to our retirement processes. Question two, are there any changes in service that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? No. Question three, are there, is there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? No rate or fee increases. Question four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? And we do not have any major equipment purchases proposed. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, specify. We do not have any eliminating or combining or contracting of positions. Question six, did your department receive ARPA funding? No. And then question seven is also a no with respect to ARPA funding.
Okay, our internal auditor, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Council President Wood. I think you answered my question about personnel, so that's a, that's a short-term position you added, just to clarify.
Yes, I can't give an approximate date of when our retirement analyst will retire. However, I wish she would stay with us forever. But I think it's prudent to succession plan, and once she decides that she's ready to retire, then we would eliminate that position.
Okay, great. And then were you asked to make any decreases in your budget for this year?
Not specific decreases. I am aware of some of the budget concerns because I'm also the chief labor negotiator, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, one final question. Your IT allocation jumped quite a bit. Did you buy new software or anything like that for the IT department?
I'll have to check into that. It could be because of our NeoGov or, oh, well, the new FTE. That would, that would cause an IT increase.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it a little bit, but that should probably be what it is, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, I have Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Could, could you tell me a little bit about what the residency incentive program for $25,000 is?
Oh, yes. The residency incentive program is a program where city employees can get a down payment assistance. It's through the city.
Councilmember Cost, it's something that was started a number of years ago. I think it's still at $5,000. And if a, a new employee purchases a house inside the City of Lansing, they receive the $5,000. Each year, it's deducted by $1,000. And at the end of five years, it's paid off. If they sell the home or move out of the city, then they have to pay the balance of what's due back on that.
So how do you market that? Because I've, I've never heard of it. How do you market it to the prospective employees or new employees?
You know, that's something we need to look into. It is traditionally, I think, been with respect on our Intranet page, but that is a good point that we need to look into and make sure that all are aware. I know from time to time, we've sent out emails to make people aware, and I'll have to check to make sure that we have orientation materials included.
Okay. And then I saw $13,000 for the Employee Recognition Program. If you could just shed a little light on what that is?
Yes. So the Employee Recognition Program is an event that is, for the last couple of years, it's been thrown at the Lugnut Stadium, where all employees can come. They can bring their family members. They can bring their children. We have wristbands for the children, so they can partake in the bounce houses and all of those festivities. There's a meal, and also the Lugnuts game. It's a really good time for employees to engage with each other, with department heads, with the mayor and the mayor's staff. And I believe some council members have also come to this event.
Gotcha. The last thing I wanted to ask is, I noticed in, from fiscal year '22 to the proposed budget, we sharply increased salaries. Is that just contractual increases? I think we went from like 520,000 to 900,000.
I think we also added the, the FTE.
So the FTE in increases was almost 400,000?
I can double check, but we added a position, and you're talking about from this current one to the next, the proposed one?
It would be, it would be two, yeah, two, it would have been 22 is actual that I'm comparing it to.
Yeah, so that would be the FTE, and also union negotiated increases. All except for two in my department are bargaining unit members.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, so I think what Mr. Cost was trying to get at is that if you look at the summary of projected full-time positions by department, there's been four FTE added in the last two years. And so can you talk a little bit about the other three FTE that have been added? What did we get?
Oh, okay. So we, we have a current vacancy for a deputy director. We have a current vacancy for a health and wellness specialist or admin. We also have a hiring specialist. We recently hired a hiring specialist in the last couple of months, and I am working to get the jobs classified and get the paperwork done for the other positions as well. We're working on a priority list with respect to hiring, and sometimes unfortunately, the needs in my department are outweighed by others, such as like police and fire, who we have immediate needs for and other potential positions that we have come up.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I guess I have a follow-up question. With regards to, and you're rather new in the position, so I don't want you to take this as a criticism. But how many hiring specialists do we have right now? Let me start with that.
So we have a hiring manager, and then we have three specialists right now. Our most recent specialist started in, I believe, February. And so there's a, a training period that people have to go through to learn the contracts. I mean, we have eight different bargaining units with various CBAs and different hiring language. So that's, that's where we're at with hiring specialists. We have one vacancy.
Okay. So what is, I mean, is there anything in this budget? Or is there anything internally that we're doing process-wise? When we talk about job, like, you know, finalization of job description, we talk about posting of a job. We talk about, you know, pooling of the applicants and then, and then testing. We talk about, you know, executing interviews and then, and then job offers. So where we're going from beginning to end, historically, we have been woefully slow. And as a matter of fact, I've talked to a number of people that have applied, same time, City of Lansing, maybe they're applying, you know, at the county, maybe they're applying. And typically, they have been through the entire process with another entity before they even get a call back on their application with regard to the City of Lansing. And so when you're talking about job seekers, we have to have an efficient process, and we have to make sure that, you're absolutely right, other departments have immediate needs. But your department supports every other department, right? Particularly when you talk about the hiring and training and the like. So what are we doing to speed up our process, to make our process a little bit more efficient? And to ensure that we can be competitive?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I agree. HR is the heart of the city. Everything flows from HR. And so it's been a priority to kind of look at some of these efficiencies that we can make. We've made some efficiencies in the police processes by combining steps and eliminating steps that are duplicative, and we've seen some successes there. We've also had some really great negotiated CBAs that have helped in our recruitment and our retention. And we're also looking at other areas. We just recently had a seasonal job fair where we went through the majority of the steps in one day. And so we will be looking at kind of modifying that for other positions as well to see if we can get these steps accomplished in, you know, shorter amounts of time. We're looking at the efficiencies. I'm actually looking at our vacancy for our hiring specialist to see if we can kind of adjust some of the duties to be able to streamline processes where some of our other hiring specialists can be on the front lines. I've asked them to go to events in the community, so you're gonna see us more out in the community. I'm really excited about it. So there's going to be some process improvements. Our applicant tracking system, we're looking to see what kind of processes and improvements we can make from that standpoint. Our specialists had training, the first training that they've had since the pandemic. They learned NeoGov during the pandemic online. So this is the first time that they've had interaction with somebody in person, and so we were learning about some of those efficiencies that can be made, such as reference checks, e-references, and, and other efficiencies that can be done to take some of their time away from some of these tasks and focus more on candidate engagement, which is so important in this climate. I hope I answered your question.
I think you absolutely did. I'm just gonna ask, and just be frank. So we have 927 funded positions in the city, right? So is a HR department of 15 sufficient, particularly when you're looking at three hiring specialists?
HR needs a lot more employees. It's not sufficient. But I, we do understand the budget constraints that the city has.
Are there other questions? I have a few for you, Elizabeth. First of all, on the line items, under your contractual services, you have $235,000. Can we get a list of what those contractual services are?
Yes.
If you could provide that. Also, under line item, you have training for $25,000. Could you explain what that training is? Is that for all employees? Is that just for your HR employees?
I think it's been used for various items. If we send somebody to some mandated trainings, that can be used for that. Also, our HR trainings. Training is a big component to HR, and that's something that I'm looking to streamline as well, as far as certifications and the specialties and the disciplines that our HR staff embodies, so definitely.
If we could get a list of what those are as well. Also, sort of to piggyback off of what Councilmember Hussein had talked about, you know, last year, we looked at 69 vacancies, and right now, we're at 84, I believe was the number that we were given today in Ways and Means. The, the idea of anything that we can do to try to enhance that process and to move that process along. One of the things that I've been told by people that have applied for jobs, and I realize some of these jobs are skilled jobs and should be able to go online and fill out applications. But some of these jobs are seasonal workers and things like that that might not have the skills. Why don't we have paper applications available?
So that's something that we've already tackled in my short tenure as the HR Director. So in our last seasonal process, I think it was '12, we had computers set up for people to create their applications. We are there to help them, help them shepherd them through the process of creating those. We're also working with UAW to streamline our hiring process. The one thing that we want to mention is we want to have everything in this applicant tracking system. So we're, we're looking at options for people that may have barriers to completing these online applications. So that's something we're definitely looking at, and we're working with President Parker of the UAW to address those issues.
I, I really hope so, because one of the things that came out of our Ad-Hoc Committee on diversity and inclusion was the fact that we needed to look at making sure that we had vehicles within the city that allowed everyone to participate. And again, not everyone can go to the library. Not everyone has internet. can go to the library, not everyone has internet. And if it means picking up a paper application and maybe having an intern or someone enter that into your system to make sure that you're tracking it, means that we haven't lost that particular person that could end up being a good employee for us.
Absolutely, and that's on our radar. That was part of our planning meeting with UAW.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then what training are we doing on diversity and inclusion?
So we have, we have some trainings going on. I don't want to speak out of turn because I'm not the only one that is facilitating this training. Through HRCS and the MRJEA, there are, there's cabinet-level training that's taking place. There's also HR training that's taking place on best practices with respect to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay, but are we doing anything, you know, no different than hearing that we hadn't had employee evaluations sometimes in 15 years? How often are we doing some of these trainings? You know, I think you come into an organization, you're deluged with trainings, and then five years later, laws change, things happen, but we've never caught up with making sure that there's been ongoing training for employees.
Absolutely, and that is part of the MRJEA plan. I don't want to speak out of turn, because that's also with our chief diversity officer, who can provide more information along with the HRCS director. But included in the MRJEA plan is a train-the-trainer component, where employees are tasked with undergoing training, and we will be doing train-the-trainer programs. But I agree, yes, and that's part of that, to get a schedule and have regular training and have it, it would be consistent.
Well, I know sometimes our council members here get a little frustrated with the fact that every year, we have this same training, and it might be the same tape that we've seen or video that we've seen. But the point is, it's like clockwork. We know that we're getting it this year. So I would encourage, as we look at that, that we try to make sure that we have some kind of regular basis that we're doing that with.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hussein?
I actually have one, and this isn't a question for the director necessarily, but more of a question or request from our executive assistant. We were told in leadership last year by our chief strategy officer, Shelby Frayer, that one of the things she was going to do upon coming back to the city was to audit a number of contracts across departments. And so the contractual services question actually got me thinking. Can we get a list along with the contractual services, obviously from Human Relations, but what, can we get a list of what contractual services or contracts have actually been audited and what the findings are or were? Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that one, any contracts that HR has, I know one of the questions that we've been asked over a period of time is, do they have their current licenses? Are you checking for current insurances? All of those. Sometimes we've had these contracts for some times with organizations, and then we come to find out that they don't have current insurances, or the people that are doing the work don't have their current licenses and things like that. So if you have any within HR, I would like you to let us know that those have been looked at. And as a matter of fact, for the internal auditor, I'd like that question sent out to every department. Yes, City Attorney?
Just on
You know how I feel about this.
Just on, it's not working. Just on that issue, we always review for that when we approve the first contract. But afterwards,
I know.
That's got to be a function of the department.
I agree. And again, we continuously have ones that don't have insurance or don't have current certifications. So, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Elizabeth. We appreciate that, and we'll appreciate that information, follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our public service. Mr. Kilpatrick?
Council President Wood.
Thank you. Council President Wood and council members. So I will go through these questions first, and obviously, you will probably have many follow-up questions. I'll be as quick as possible to give you as much time to ask me your questions. So the first question about the difference between this proposed budget versus the current budget. I will point out some things that probably the internal auditor may have found and maybe not. But our 3-1-1 allocation, we are doing that differently this year. In the past year, when it was the first year, we didn't know exactly what the call volume would be. So that was within our Engineering Internal Service Fund, and that was distributed based on the wages of how we allocated to those other funds. This year, we looked at call volume by type in 3-1-1, so the allocation changed a little bit. So if you're looking, you'll see a new line that says 3-1-1 allocation. Before, that would have been within the 645, the Engineering Internal Service Fund, how that was allocated out. So that will be a difference there. Our fleet costs overall, and this is distributed to multiple departments, went up about 10%. That is because of the cost of our vehicle purchases and everything else associated with vehicles these days has gone up significantly. We are assuming that that cost will kind of increase more than inflationary until we kind of make up. We didn't want to hit all departments with a huge increase this year, but we will look at what those costs are going forward and adjust those appropriately, because obviously, that is, you know, kind of balanced internal service fund, and we are just charging our costs out to those departments for each of those specific vehicles. The other one that you'll notice, kind of some big ups and downs, is in the multiple O&amp;M accounts. O&amp;M used to allocate their costs for personnel just based on previous years. They did not do an allocation assuming all of the positions were filled. So this year, what we did is by employer, by position, we looked at how those would be allocated to various funds, and that's what is in the budget now. So many of those will be higher. In the past, what they did is they actually charged all their costs to a general fund account for all the employees there, and then they allocated them back to the various funds based on the actual amount of work they did. And now what we're doing in here is we took each employee, kind of the best guess by position of what they would be working on in a year, and budgeted that here, assuming we are 100% filled. So obviously, we're not, which means those costs overall will be higher. The other thing that you'll notice in multiple funds is a significant increase in a lot of our capital projects. For example, we had two CSO projects this year totaling $55 million. One was a multiple-year project, but obviously, a contractor does not want to start before they know that we will pay for the entire contract. So even though the project would span multiple fiscal years, we needed most of that money upfront to be able to sign the contract moving forward. Also, this year, we got some federal money for some CSO downtown, but that means it was not on our current schedule. So we got $6 million in federal funds through the Army Corps of Engineers, and we have $2 million in matching funds we need to put towards that, and that was not in our normal CSO plan. So we had to move that money up. Additionally, with the Frandora Hills area, this is outside the stormwater portion of the project, but there is sanitary sewer work there and road work. And we kind of made a promise upfront that we would do that work at the same time the drain work was being done. So that is now in the fiscal '24 budget for about $2.5 million. And then our Michigan Avenue project, which is both fiscal '23 and '24, that is budgeted in the fiscal '24 budget for all the matching amount we need for that project. You'll also notice in the, kind of the fund summary, on the general fund side, kind of a significant increase there. Two projects primarily, Paulson Landfill, up by the Granger Landfill, that is something that has to have remediation done on that, and that was before we actually had a trash fund. That is why that is on the general fund side. So this amount for the $775,000 there is for the design of the remediation system. The remediation itself, that we've been asking for some federal money through our congressional representatives, is probably in the neighborhood of $3 to $4 million. And that, we won't know until we actually get the kind of design done, but that was something that we'll definitely bring back, and we'll be looking for state or federal funds to assist us with that. And then within the CSO project, we have some additional storm sewer work. In general, what we do is the combined sewer pipe. We will rehab that with sanitary funds, and that will become the storm sewer. In this case, we had some sewers that we could not do that with, so there's new storm sewer. And with that, we can't use the sanitary fund for the new storm sewer. So that's a combination of general fund money and road money. So that's kind of the question, question one. If there are other specifics on any of those projects, when we get to that, feel free to ask those. If there are any changes in services, and if so, why? No, there's no, no changes in the services that we're providing with this upcoming budget. Rate or fee increases? Yes. Every year, we have kind of inflationary increases in both trash, recycling yard waste, and sewer fund. And so that is the same, same this year. Fourth question, any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? There aren't significant changes, but every year within the fleet budget, obviously, there's a significant amount of vehicle purchases there, and that is, we're trying to actually increase that a little bit to get our fleet a little newer. Obviously, that impacts all the departments that use those vehicles, and so that is something that if the departments say, we don't need new vehicles, we want to keep preparing what we have, we can adjust that accordingly. But we make kind of our, the best projection or recommendation based on the age of the vehicles, whether it will be more cost-effective to replace them or to continue to maintain them. There's also a change in how we're purchasing some of our vehicles. In our enterprise funds, in the past, it was really only parking and the ones out at the wastewater plant that were bought from those respective funds. But this year, and actually, I think we started last year, trash, which is an enterprise fund, and then recycling yard waste, we are buying those vehicles directly from that fund versus fleet purchasing them and then repaying fleet. So they're coming, it's kind of, I think, a better cost accounting that all of those costs for the enterprise funds are directly in the enterprise fund versus being mingled in with the fleet fund, which you may have losers and winners with, with general fund money in there. The fifth one, eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? No, no changes in positions are anticipated with this upcoming budget. Did your apartment receive any ARPA funding? And if so, how was it spent? So fleet received about $6.9 million in ARPA funding. That was for fire, police, and public service department vehicles. If you want a breakdown of those vehicles, we can provide that. And those, due to the long lead time on some of this equipment, we're not anticipating some of that coming in late 2023, which would be in the fiscal '24 budget or early '24. So that kind of comes to that seventh question about any carryforwards anticipated in the '24 budget. So we're not anticipating any, but if any vehicles that are, have not been received by June 30th of this year, we would request, we will be requesting those funds to be carried forward for the vehicles that we have already purchased orders in for with ARPA funds.
Before I count, call on council members, I understand that our feed might be down. Dominic is working on it, so if you are getting texts from people, we're working as fast as we can. Peter, did you want to?
I just wanted to get on your list.
Okay, thank you. That would be our internal auditor, and then Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, President Wood, and thanks for being here and for your presentation. It was really helpful. One clarifying question.
Emily, can you pull that a little bit? Thank you.
How's that? Is that better? Okay. So it looks like your personnel numbers on this budget went from 227 to 226. Is that not the case?
I believe that is accurate. I'll have to check, but we did, in this budget, eliminate the transportation engineer
Got it.
with basically filling. We basically, and our engineering manager and city engineer is actually helping the audience. And so with that kind of change, we pulled, and from those who have been here a long period of time, they knew transportation used to be with public service. Then it went over to planning neighborhood development, and then came back. So we basically had two division heads with the city engineer and transportation engineer. And so what we did is we kind of eliminated one of those division heads under the engineering manager. And so that, that position, yes, was eliminated with this budget.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then moving on to the local streets, major streets. So, I mean, the increase from local to major transfer was 30%, and it looks like the increase in capital for local streets was 70%. Do we have a plan of how we're going to pay for that with the Act 51 money, or what's, what's the administration doing there?
I would say, long-term, if we had projects the way we do this year, which is kind of an anomaly, we'd have a problem. So that's something we'll have to look at. But no, this, this year, because of the timing of these projects, they are much higher, both on the major street and local street side, than we anticipate moving forward. However, it's a valid concern that we keep showing that we're using fund balance, and really, the only reason we're not using fund balance in those is because of vacancies, or because we have a light, you know, season with snow, and we're saving money there. So I think long-term, we do need to figure that out. I wouldn't put it all on the state or the federal government to try and bail us out, especially on the local street side. Especially with, on our project side, we need at least 50% of non-state funding to do projects in local streets. And we do have our, you know, local street millage money. We have the Eden County millage for those streets. We have CSO money that can match that. And if the Board of Water and Light is ramping up their water main replacement, that, those are also local funding sources. But just with other infrastructure in the city, it's getting old, and we do need to look long-term to make sure that we're making decisions that will put us in kind of good stead in the future.
Okay, thank you. And then for the CIPs in this budget, do you have a breakdown of how many of those are mandated versus just, you know, what the administration wants to do?
I can get that. Yeah, I don't have one, you know, specifically, but yeah. I mean, CSO, as everyone knows, that is a mandate. Most of the others are, I would say discretionary to some degree, but if we're not fixing any of our streets with the, you know, the Act 51 money we're getting, that's sort of a problem, too.
Okay.
But I can do that.
Great, thank you. And then, can you talk a little bit about how utility is charged throughout the city?
Yeah, okay. So utilities are, I don't want to say kind of a mess, but as far as the allocation, the way it goes, all the utility bills go to finance. Finance pays the bills. But as far as how the accounts are done here, we are looking at all of the utility bills right now to see what facilities they're for and which fund they really should be charged to. So what we've done here is, this is pretty much, we've looked at previous year and either what the charges were or what the budgeted amount was, and kept that as it is until we can figure out what that allocation is. And then it's really a question, philosophically, do we charge those utilities to the end user? Say, City Hall, does that get charged just to property management? Or do we look at all the departments and the square footage they have in City Hall and charge that fraction to each of the departments? So that's something first.
We're already getting that.
Well, so, I mean, the way, at least in the property management one, there is, there's property management, I think it says Hazel Street, and then it says, it's basically SWAC. It's Washington, you know, street. So, so again, we can figure out how it goes in budget, but the question is, should all those property management costs be in property management, or should they be spread out to the departments that are the end users? And so that's just like we have with IT allocation. We could say, well, IT should pay all those costs. But especially with enterprise funds or internal service funds, it would seem like the true cost should be at least allocated or accounted for, whether it's allocated to those, those line items or not.
Okay, so this is something
This is something we're working on. So within the '24 year, we will be able to say, on all these utility accounts for that entire series, whether it's our department or other departments, what is going into that and whether those should be charged to different accounts.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thanks, Madam President. Andy, thanks for being here tonight. Could you talk a little bit about the condition of the current, the fleet for trash and cart? I know we've had this conversation a little bit in the past, but like, where are, like, what's the status of those vehicles, packers?
So we are still, the age is above kind of what industry standards is, which is about seven to eight years, and we're kind of in the 12-year range. Now, with the yard waste vehicles, because they're not used all year, and they're different vehicles because they throw bags in there versus using the arms, those are the oldest vehicles that we have. And so we're, we're looking to replace those as well. We do need a long-term plan for that. And I think the way we're allocating fleet costs now, basically, every vehicle, it's kind of a one-year lagging. We look at what the cost was last year for all, all of those costs. That is what is assigned to the vehicle for the, for the next year. So now, all those aren't just kind of lumped together in the fleet budget, and they are directly allocated, whatever that is costing fleet, is allocated to the directly allocated, whatever that is costing fleet, is allocated to the department. So we're actually able to see what those are, and we're trying incrementally to increase those. So we see, you know, two vehicles this year, and we will probably start to increase that as we go forward, as long as we can keep that within the rates that are, you know, reasonable rate increases. And so the other problem with those vehicles in particular is they get used very hard. So we have, even, we have new trucks that, you know, a hydraulic line or something or an arm will go down weeks or months after we get it. So it's not just the age, but age and rust and everything does make it so that the repairs, they're, we almost always have packers and they're being repaired.
I think you answered my second question, which was going to be, will this new allocation method allow for a more timely replacement of the vehicles in each enterprise fund?
It does, because it also allows each department to look at the vehicles they have and their costs, and then they make, they can make a decision whether they want the vehicle or not. It's not like we just say, here's what you're paying, no matter what you're getting. Here are the vehicles you had last year. If you want to keep them, you can continue to pay for them and the repairs. If you want to spend, well, probably less money long term to replace them, then you can make that decision and put that in your, in your budget or your allocation in the future.
Thank you.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, I ask the question, it's about every year. How many operable sweepers do we have right now?
I believe we have, so we had four when they're super old. And I want to say we have three right now. I will get that. I mean, I think we have two different types. We did rent one, and then we were able to purchase that for a discount because it was a used sweeper, but I can get you that. I think, the issue before is we had four sweepers, but they were not always operating. So we really had a fleet of two. And so now that we're not only sweeping at night, we're sweeping at night and the day, I believe that, you know, two to three should be okay. But as you know, people, as soon as we can get out and sweep, they're saying, well, we need my street swept, and it takes us months to get through that. We're still not back up to, we used to sweep our majors, you know, eight times a year and our locals four, and we're now down to two, maybe two and a half, maybe a little more in the majors, but we're, we're less than that. And so I think it's a balance of budget versus level of service and, you know, what do we want to pay for? But I will, I would definitely get you the numbers and we can, you know, look at the miles and hours we're putting on there and kind of when we're getting through in the number of cycles. So if you'd like that, I can get you all that information.
Can you, regards sweeping, can you speak publicly about what, what we are going to do or what we are doing with regards to the issues with our chip seal? And in, in terms of the budget, is there anything reflected in this budget to account for the fact that we got some work to do on some of those streets?
As far as last year's chip and fog seal and some of the issues we had that, we are trying to finalize something with the contractor this year to come back in and address some of those issues. As far as, you know, overall longevity, I think we're still getting longevity, we would have, because really, it's more of the emulsion that's going down there and the stone that gets pushed into the cracks that keeps that, that sealed. But there's definitely issues with the lag time between the first application when we came back and sealed it. And so more stone was migrating off the streets than we would normally expect. And in that case, we are changing our, our spec on that to have a maximum amount of time between applications. So that should reduce some of that. Probably the reason you haven't seen this before the last several years is it is new to the city, not new to the industry, but a lot of times you would see just normal chip seal out on county roads where they have, you know, ditches, not storm sewers, and it doesn't really matter if that rock moves off. Whereas here, we're putting that extra seal on top of it to hold that stone there so it's not getting into our storm sewers. So that is definitely a, a concern. We're finding this, that if you have the correct candidate streets where you apply it, even if the street has not fallen apart completely, which is not what we want, it will increase the longevity of that street. So we're applying it on streets where people might drive down and say, well, hey, this thing is just fine, why are you doing more work on this where you just did this three years ago? Well, you want to make sure that the street hasn't fallen apart because it's much more expensive to reconstruct it versus keep it in, in good shape, just like, you know, the roof on your house or changing the oil on, on your car. That's what we're trying to do with it. So there, there will become a time where the candidate streets that we have, that we could do this treatment on, you know, it expands and contracts based on the, the road condition. So our, our hope is that by applying this and the increase we're seeing with CSO work and Board of Water and Light water main replacement, that our street conditions will continue to improve. They are finally going up just a tad. I'm not saying that trend, I can look at a year or two and say that's going to keep going, but with the fact that we have more capital expenditures out there on, on the roads now and not necessarily road funds, the condition should continue to improve.
Hey, are there other questions? I have a few for you, Andy. I would like a list of the public service vehicles, if you could get us that. And sort of piggybacking off of Councilmember Hussein's, have we worked out with law guarantees and contracts? You know, I think that's one of the things that we've seen, not only from this deal with the chips, but also with some asphalt work that we have done over the years where it's deteriorated faster in one location than another location. It's been different contractors and, and things like that. So have we come up with a good clawback in contracts before we let any more contracts out?
So in most cases, when we're putting, well, all cases, when we're putting asphalt down, we will test the asphalt, both the application temperature, the density, and that is the way that normally it's tested. We can certainly add a warranty. And what you find, just like with an extended warranty on a car or something else, a service contract, you'll be probably paying for that. We do have that for the first time.
But we pay for it anyways.
Well, but you'll, you'll pay generally more for that. So why people don't buy extended warranty on their dishwasher or, or their car or something, you get the guarantee, but you pay for the guarantee. So as long as we are choosing the, the right contractors and testing that, that I think in general, we are getting our value. I would think, if I were a contractor and all the city wanted me to do was put, say, an inch and a half of asphalt over a road that may be in decent shape or maybe in crappy shape, I would not warranty it because you do not know that what's under that pavement is good. And how can, how could I, as a contractor, say, this pavement will last five years if the base under that will fail in, in two or three years? A full reconstructive road, certainly, not a problem. Some of these ceiling treatments, yeah, I think we could probably put some sort of warranty in there. We do with sidewalks, our sidewalk warranty is three years on that, and we can definitely look at adding those warranties. I think our, our best bet, and what most other communities do, is they basically make sure we have good inspection out there when it's applied.
Then you had talked about the different allocations for 3-1-1. Are you aware that the budget for 3-1-1 is $839,575? And you, public service, are paying $398,180? You're paying almost half of the 3-1-1. Do you believe that you're getting that many calls that warrant you to pay half?
So I can't speak to specific calls, but I, I mean, I do know with the report we're getting of how the calls are allocated, that, you know, we're paying the appropriate fraction of that. Can I say that we are getting, you know, if, if we had $300,000 worth and we could have public service employees, that we could do it more or less, you know, effectively? That's difficult to say because until, I would say, they are at 100% and allocated, you know, with the employees, the way, way maybe for all departments, it's really hard to say. But do I think 3-1-1 is a good way for people to contact the city?
I wasn't asking that.
Yeah.
When I'm looking at this, at the, you know, I mean, district court isn't paying anything.
And that's, again, as far as, I can't speak to how the allocation was done to the departments. All I can speak to is, within our department, the allocation that we were given, we allocate that by the, the call types and the reports we're able to run on the calls and how they're categorized within our division.
We had a discussion a few years back, it's probably been now seven to eight years, a few years goes by so fast, on the sewer fund. And that had been being increased at 4%. We were told that we were going to get to a place that 4% wasn't going to be enough. Is that something that you're looking at?
It is something we're looking at, yes. For the last two sewer projects where we got SRF loans, we had to change that from a 20-year repayment to a 30-year payment repayment because, and I can't remember exactly what year, but somewhere in the next six to eight years, if we didn't make that change, the sewer fund would not have enough money to pay for these projects. We are doing a, a rate model analysis right now and looking at the current costs of our projected CSO projects that go out through 2035. And based on that, we will be looking at what rate increases we need to sustain the fund going through CSO. Once we're done with CSO and some of those loans start to drop off, then I think the fund will be in good shape. But yes, you are correct that the, the next X number of years, and we'll have to see what that X is, would be a concern, that we want to make sure the fund stays solvent, but at the same time, we want to make sure that our rates stay affordable for our residents and businesses.
Because that's one of the big things that they point to when they're looking at their bill, what their water bill is, $30, and then they're paying close to.
It used to be about twice. Yeah, correct. You're right. It is, I think, much more complicated to take care of the waste once it's left the house or property than it is to get a small pipe there. Now, Board of Water and Light may say something completely different, that it's, you know, very complicated to get the water to the house, but especially with our, if it weren't, if the city had the foresight and other folks 100 years ago to put in two separate pipes, we wouldn't be in this situation. But that's, you know, when we were, sewer was just dumping stuff in the river. So now we're left as a kind of legacy core city of having to separate these sewers and the cost there, it's either, we could say, well, should that be a property tax issue? No, it should be on the, you know, on the sewer users, and that's, that's the way it is. So it is on those, those sewer bills. And are they high? Yeah, I don't like paying twice as much for, for my sewer bill as I do for my water bill either, nor would I like to pay a 10% increase. And so we want to keep those, I know it's above inflation, but the other thing we're finding is, long term, water use is going down as people buy, you know, more efficient toilets or showers or whatever it is. So our actual amount of sewage that we're, we're treating that came from water bills keeps going down, which means really, if we have a 4% increase, we might actually have a 2% or 3% increase in actual revenue. And so we may actually have to look at higher rate increases even just to keep up, up with inflation.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just a quick question. You talk about foresight and anticipating. Isn't it true that a prior administration delayed the CSO program, stopped the CSO program? And if that's true, how many years was it essentially stopped? And how much money did that cost us in long-term cost?
Yeah, so I mean, essentially, there were kind of two things there. One thing is, we are spending money quicker than we are taking it in. So we were, basically, if we kept on at that same pace, we would have, I don't want to say bankrupted the sewer fund, but we would have had to delay projects. And so there was a pause taken in the program for separation to see if we would be able to work out a longer schedule with the state and the federal government. And during that time, as opposed to doing any projects, they chose to build, let the fund build back up. As far as what it would cost the city or has cost the city, I guess you would say, it's probably a fair amount of money because obviously, construction costs keep going up. And as we found out with COVID and post-COVID, those construction costs are, you know, 10% to 20% higher than we would have expected. I don't know where that's going to stay, if that's going to stay high. Generally, once, you know, contractors get a certain amount of money, they don't want to necessarily give it back and say, well, now we're going to give you a, a break and we're going to, you know, reduce our costs by 10% next year. So it definitely has cost the city. How much, it's hard to say, but both by construction cost and by the fact that, you know, rates are higher now for, for SRF funding. Not, not significantly, they're still not what they are on the, on the, you know, on the private side, but they're higher.
Yeah, and I just wanted to recognize, I, I think there are folks that are internal to your, to your department that believe that the pause button was, was held down for too long, that potentially, some of that was on the backend political and that it has caused the ratepayers here in the City of Lansing a staggering amount of money. So I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, I think that does it. I don't see any other questions. So thank you very much. Brett, you've had the good fortune of watching all the others, so you know what to do. And no, you can't have your slides shown.
That's right.
I know you're trying, but you can't have it.
So, number one, in terms of the differences from the current fiscal years to the proposed budget, we are less than 1% for our general fund, and we do have an increase in the cemetery fund of 7.5%. Question number two, in terms of the changes in services that we're responsible for, there are no changes there. Number three, fee increases, I would have counsel turn to page 119, I believe, of your budget book, which is where we have the fee increases there. Did you want me to go through those now?
If you could just highlight some of those, please.
So we have fee increases there at Turner Dodge. We have a few increases for the cemeteries, some for the gymnasiums and our community rooms as well, and then for our summer park and, uh, summer park playground program, summer camp. So those are, you'll see those again on page 119 of your budget book. Are there major equipment purchases proposed in the budget? I guess I would refer to page 116, which is our capital improvements projects. Did you want me to go through those right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, again, we're, I believe this is page 116. And so this is our capital improvement projects for this year and what those are going to look like. Let me find that here. So we have our typical projects, remembering that, the Gulf subsidy, the cemetery subsidy, and the kids camp program come off the top of that. And then this is where we have, again, capital improvement projects for us are over $15,000. The amount appropriated this year, you have 2.5 million there. So you see the subsidies listed there at the top. Grant match, this is what we use for matching grants, whether they be for the state of Michigan through the trust fund or through the county Parks and Trails Millage, for instance, or any other grants. Citywide repair and maintenance, this is for unscheduled or unplanned maintenance in the parks or at the community centers or the cemeteries. This fund is used for that. We do have design costs for the Fenner, and this is the loop of the River Trail that currently is in the Bear Lake area that will extend into Fenner and into Corporate Research Park, which is on the east side of 127. So that is design cost for that. Playground equipment and renovations is listed there as well. We have a basketball court complex, so that would be equipment there. Basketball court complex is listed there along with the fit lot that we are looking to put in at Davis Park there. Holiday nights of light structures, these are for our program that we have at Francis Park and the drive-through lights there. So these would be structures of, could be Santa in a Sleigh or anything else, put it in lights, put it up. And then Ranney Skate Park improvements round out the millage. So you see our capital projects there of 1.8. You add that to the 600. round out the millage. So you see our capital projects there of 1.8. You add that to the 600,000, they're in subsidies, and there's the total of 2.5 for the capital improvement projects.
If you'd also look on page 98 in your budget book, you'll find that list there as well.
Okay, um, are there any eliminating, combining, contracting, uh, differences in the budget this year? No, there are not any differences from anything that we have done previously there. In terms of ARPA funding and what we have done in the current year, uh, so far, we have, uh, used money for the Hunter Park Pool Liner and also for the concrete pad at Rutter Park. Um, the major projects coming up this year will be the parking lots, and there will be three of them, well, really two parking lots, and then the entry drive at Francis Park that will go between the east and west ends there. We're also redoing Guyer Park, um, Ball Field, the Ball Field lots, and then Davis Park East Side. So this would be the Pleasant Grove entrance. So those parking lots are scheduled. Um, we plan on doing Francis, that would be in the fall of this year, and then the other two lots would be going in the spring of 2024. And then, um, in terms of, and those would be the ARPA funds really that are, that are coming. So one is, those others are in the current fiscal year, everything else is coming here forward in this one. So those are the answers to the seven questions.
Okay, I have our internal auditor, and then I have councilmembers, Batafor.
Thank you, President Wood. Um, thanks, Brett. So it's showing here that you added two positions in FY '24. Can you just explain what those FTEs are?
Yeah, so those FTEs are, one is a, um, full-time aquatics position, which we are entering, interviewing for. And then the other is a community center programmer position. So we had, as you remember, some of these were, were, we had four part-time positions in these. We combined those for the two FTEs.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, no further questions.
Uh, councilmember Batafor.
Yeah, thanks, President Wood. Uh, Brett, how's it going tonight?
Very well.
Good, thanks. Um, I have a question about participation in programs. Do you see, um, sort of, are we returning to pre-pandemic levels of participation in our youth programs and programs for parks?
So definitely in our, in our sports programs, our youth sports is, uh, has exceeded where we were prior to the pandemic. The problem that we are seeing now post-pandemic is, for instance, our, all of our campsites, our after-school programs, they are all full. We have waiting lists. We do not have enough staff to be able to, um, supply for the need that is out there. And that really goes even into, like I say, the after-school program, the summer program especially, um, but then even our classes for kids, whether those be swimming, for instance, uh, not able to find enough staff to be able to have those programs. Why does it work in youth sports? We depend a lot more on volunteers, volunteer coaches. So we have to be able to find the officials for that, which is a little bit of a struggle. But we are really seeing in our youth sports, the increases, and then the other ones is, we're steadily increasing, but it is a definite staffing issue.
Were you all part of the, um, seasonal job fair?
So with that, that was geared towards our parks, seasonals, and our seasonal maintenance. We are planning a job fair similar to that, uh, for our, especially our camp positions and our, our time out of school. Uh, so that one is coming up as well. We're doing the exact same method as far as trying to have that job fair and on-the-spot hiring, just like we did for the parks' seasonals.
Great, thank you.
Are there other, councilmember Jackson, and then councilmember Hussein?
Thank you. My question is just looking at the cover page that we got for the budget description where it says, "Regular maintenance..." dot, 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 "Lansing's urban forest areas through regular cycles of tree planting, fertilization, and trimming." Can you highlight some of the tree planting efforts, planting efforts? I know we always hear about trees coming down, and I've heard from a few people within the city that, um, just over time, we're just basically declining on our tree canopy. Can you talk about those efforts?
Yeah, you saw the tree canopy report, and, um, that is something that we need to continue to work on, is look at ways to maintain the trees that we do have, whether that's ordinances for future builds or, you know, taking a look at all ways that we can, that we can have that. What we are doing with tree planting, we have 525 trees headed out right now. Many of the neighbors, and in fact, I think all that requested those, uh, have received that tree. Um, and then we're also planting those in areas that, for instance, um, they may be city right-of-ways or boulevards, and also into the parks and cemeteries. So we have 525 trees going in, um, this year. We are, we will be taking a list for future as far as individuals that would like to see that tree in their front yard, in their boulevard there, in the city right-of-way. Um, and those are the goals that we have as far as increasing the number of plantings that we have. Uh, other areas that we can increase the tree canopy is by doing no-mow zones. And that has not been popular with council before. It does take, if you want to take a look at areas that have seen that work, um, Ingham Park has, has seen great deal of progress with that. Tecumseh is growing in very nice as far as the trees. It does take a while, and it takes, um, the ability to be able to see that and to be able to be patient with that while those trees are coming up. But we planted none of them. That all was, uh, urban forest, being able to reseed and grow. Uh, and so that's another way that we can take a look at what are areas within our current parks where we allow that to happen. Um, but again, that was, that was met with a lot of friction, and it does take a vision of, uh, being able to see what that will look like in 10, 15 years versus the first five.
Quick follow-up on that. Do you have enough resources to take care of the trees once they go in?
In terms of the tree planting, we are, we put the water bags out there. So we're asking for folks to obviously maintain and help that tree along. So we need help from the public, um, to be able to make sure that that tree in front of their house is out there. Uh, could we have more resources? I mean, just like all the other directors that have come up here. Yeah, we can definitely, we cannot plant, um, more than what we're talking about right now, you know, with 500 trees and some of those being planted by, by our neighbors. So we can always use help, whether that's volunteer groups planting or neighborhood groups, more neighborhood groups saying we either want to plant them in the parks or along the right-of-ways for our neighbors that are not able to plant those in there. Um, so we're always looking, I think this is definitely a way for this community to say that we are committed to, uh, trees and how our neighborhood looks and the benefits of those. And so that's definitely something where volunteers, where neighborhood groups, church groups, whatever, can get involved and make impact in their community.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just to, just to piggyback on that, I guess when I first heard that, I, I thought, Councilman Jackson, you were asking more about, um, as an example, tree trimming, whether that be, um, emergency tree trimming, whether that be, um, preventative. Um, do we, do we have enough personnel to do that end? Because we talk about planting trees, which is incredibly important, uh, but I know, you know, there are entire swaths of neighborhoods, frankly, uh, that when you look at the public right-of-way, uh, namely, I think the sidewalk, where it's almost impassable because the trees have grown, and then I'm talking city trees in the public right-of-way, um, and because we have not been able to get out there and, and actually trim those trees. How, what are we, how are we doing with regard to capacity?
Our number one priority is our hazard removals. Okay, so this is a tree that is dead and/or dying or has decay and is to the point where we need to remove that tree before that falls one way or the other, or has large limb loss. Um, that's our number one priority. How are we doing on that? Um, we are slightly behind on that. Um, but some of that is, um, you know, we're, we're not bad in terms of where we are on our, on our removal list. In terms of our hazard and pruning, trimming, so that individuals, again, are able to walk down those sidewalks to a height of eight feet so that you can see all stop signs when you come up to them, et cetera. Um, that is where we are struggling even, even more. Um, but again, our hazard trees is our, is our first priority in making sure that those trees that you see with a red dot, uh, that we're getting those out of there.
Okay, and then, you know, we talk about stumps every year. Um, has there ever been any discussion about trying to, I don't know, pull down state and federal funding? Is there state and federal funding for that type of deal? Um, obviously, you know, you're talking about a staggering number now, uh, because there are so many stumps out there. Um, but if we were to, you know, do a few each year, or has there been any, any problem solving on that end with regards to the stumps?
So your first part of your question was on, is there funding out there for that? Um, I know plenty of funding, you know, there, there's a fund from the state for tree planting, but not stump removal. Um, is there, is that Act 51 eligible? I'm just turning for my friend, Mr. Cal Patrick, but I seen he has exited the building. Um, so I don't know if that is Act 51 eligible, but I, I doubt it in terms of what that funding would be for. So in terms of grant funds for, uh, stump grinding, I haven't seen that out there. Um, have we talked about plans for stump grinding and how that would, how that would be rolled out and what that would look like? We have had those discussions. Um, there's a lot to it. So first you come through and grind the stump. Then you have to get those millings out of there. Once you get the millings out of there, you put the, uh, black dirt and topsoil and seed back in there for growth. So you do that at each, each one of the spots on there. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty significant labor-intensive project, and therefore, um, that comes with a cost as well.
Uh, how many, with regards to fiscal year 2024, how many playground replacements are we planning for?
So we have not determined that yet because you first need to look at, um, you can spend anywhere from $500 to $500,000, uh, on a playground. So that is something we're discussing with the park board. As far as, we do want to go around and divide that by ward, similar to what we did previously. Um, but that's something we're going to be discussing with park board as far as, and which parks get what size and what amount of playground equipment.
And, and that was going to be my follow-up question. Are we going to do anything differently? And I know that there's been conversations among, amongst the park board members. Are we going to do anything differently, um, with regard to community outreach? And of course, I'm going to use the example in my ward of Ingham Park. And so what we, what we went from was a playground that, yes, I know it, it costs a little bit of money to, uh, to maintain, uh, but you looked at, you know, dynamic structures, um, and, you know, a bit more expansive than what we have now, um, which, which is, uh, you know, you had at some point gliders, you had slides, you had all those types of things. Um, and now we have kind of non-dynamic structures that are, um, more durable, uh, and probably less to maintain. Uh, but I think it was certainly shocking to the people in that neighborhood. Uh, so what are we going to do differently, uh, in the future in terms of neighborhood outreach?
So council has instructed the park board to come up with a public outreach, and we're waiting for that.
But they are actively working on that?
Actively.
Are there other questions? Um, Brett, in, in reference to the increase in the cemetery, um, fund, um, I know that, uh, Loretta brought up some points about, uh, revenues from some of the different, um, uh, avenues that she had been working on. Um, is that been taken into effect, into account?
So in terms of the perpetual care fund, that was brought up. Um, the perpetual care fund in this, in the current year that we are in and in the future, in terms of what that has earned in money, it has not.
Okay.
Um, and so therefore, to project that that fund will grow and increase and, and that, quite frankly, we just don't know. It hasn't. It has a way to, um, long ways to climb back from, just like everyone's 401K has. So that's really where we're at with, with, uh, in terms of the perpetual care. I think it was also brought up about, um, Mount Hope and, uh, revenues for that. We break out the columbarium niches in the budget versus, um, the grave opening. So I guess I'd have to look back at the specific, uh, line item for that. But we did have increases in terms of our, uh, staffing that we have had out there over the past few years, in terms of the levels that those staff had. You heard up here from other directors about the increases in personnel costs. Uh, obviously, we have had that there at the cemetery as well. Um, so those are really what we're looking at as far as where we were during the cemeteries. Did we have more, uh, burials and whatever during the pandemic? I'm sure we did. I'm sure that was part of the revenue. Uh, and I don't know that we're going to be at that level.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we thank you, Brett, for being here, um, and, um, for answering our questions. So that takes us into, um, a motion for closed session. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. Uh, so I move pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection C of the Open Meetings Act, that city council recessed into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions, uh, connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lansing and Local 421 of the International Association of Firefighters as requested by the city. Uh, and we did receive, uh, prior to the Committee of the Whole meeting, uh, a request for Elizabeth O'Leary, uh, Michael Tobin, Courtney Roberts, and Jane DeSessa to be, um, allowed in, and my understanding is that that request has been granted by leadership. So with that being said, the motion has been put forth.
We have a motion before us. If you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Batafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
And we are recessed and, uh, we'll be back shortly. Thank you. I'd like to call, uh, back into order the, uh, Committee of the Whole, and I would recognize councilmember Hussein.
Sure. Briefly, this, uh, we are actually on agenda item 7D. This is the resolution of ratification of the collective bargaining agreement, Local Number 421 International Association of Firefighters. Just very quickly, um, this, uh, does include a, uh, four-year agreement effective July 1st, 2022, uh, through June of 2026. Uh, there is a signing bonus of $1,000, uh, for each active employee on payroll, uh, as well as retroactive, uh, payment will be made on wages earned since July 1st, 2022 for those, again, um, on payroll at the time of ratification. Year one, uh, there is, uh, baked into this agreement a 3% uh, increase across the board. Year two, uh, 3% increase in terms of wages across the board. Year three, 2%, and year four, um, another 2%. Uh, there have been some changes, uh, to the retirement for folks that were, uh, hired after May 19th of 2014. They deal with things such as final average They deal with things such as final average compensation and how that is determined, as well as the multiplier that is built into the pension formula. There were some changes in terms of sick leave, positions within the department, substantial amount of changes to Article Number 24 that deals with promotions. And every amendment, as it was explained to us, is meant to essentially increase the pool of qualified candidates, but also to increase competitiveness within the department. So they're kind of pivoting away from the seniority-based model that has long been a part of the promotion piece. There are some differences with regards to ambulance rotation as well as ambulance pay. The long and short of it is that there is now more of an incentive for EMTs to, to move to the paramedic side of things. Outside of that, that's actually all I have. So with that being said, I will move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose passes unanimously. This time, we will take a quick five-minute break and then come back and start our council meeting. We are adjourned.